Hello, welcome to... Hello, welcome to the special town meeting. If you could take a seat, if you're a registered voter in the Town of Lakeville, please take a seat. And I know there are people still in line, or at least I'm told that, so they'll filter in as we're going through some of our early business and they can join us. But we want to... We've got a long meeting tonight, so we have a quorum and we'll get started. So with that, 636. A quorum being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 19th, 2016. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws and the warrant was posted by Constable Jonathan Parr on May 20th, 2016. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the general bylaws of the town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. For this meeting, I've appointed the several, along with the town clerk, the following as tellers. On the left side, we have Richard Scott. On the right side, Bob Palucci. On the center front and stage, Neil Bornstein. All of the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws by precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume "town meeting time" as a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, that's me, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. A little more about behavior. Shouting from the seats, booing and cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the finance committee. Then any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. The voting cards. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the purple or pink colored voting cards issued to each registered voter when you arrive this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has yes and no printed on it. This is printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we may have it just in case. Do not lose your voting card. You cannot get another one this evening. A little bit about motions to reconsider or rescind. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if the new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium. If you could, before we begin the special town meeting, I would like to call your attention to those residents of Lakeville who are active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Tonight, we would like to remember Marjorie Cleverly. She was member of Friends of Lakeville Library from 1991 to 2016, Lakeville Council on Aging, Board of Directors 2008 to 2016, Friends of the Lakeville Council on Aging 2014 to 2016, Lakeville Historical Society in 2014, and an election officer from 2008 and 2010. Please stand while I ask for a moment of silence in her memory and please remain standing after the moment of silence and honor our country by saluting the flag. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, if you don't mind taking your seat. Finally, I would like to introduce those of us on the stage. To my immediate left is town clerk Lillian Drain, followed by town administrator Rita Garbutt, town council Greg Surbo, selectman Mitzi Hollenbeck, Aaron Burke, John Powderley, and in the finance committee, chairman Mike Petruzzo, George Lahopolis, Dan Holland, Joe Fleming, and Ryan Trahan. Did I get everybody? Now, does everyone... Does anyone in the audience require a copy of the town warrant? If you do not have a copy, I ask that you raise your hand and the teller will bring you one. Does anyone need a copy of the warrant? Could you raise your hand? It appears everyone got one. Good job. Okay. Since you all have a copy of the warrant, I would seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor waiving the reading of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any non-residents? Also tonight, I need permission of town meeting to allow the following people who have requested who are non-residents to speak if called upon to do so. The three people would be Richard Medeas, Superintendent of Schools, Jamie Viveros, Freetown, the library director of Freetown, and Jeremy Peck, Superintendent of Streets. So, once again, I would seek a motion for those non-residents to speak if called upon. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Jamie is the librarian for Lakeville but lives in Freetown. I'm sorry, I had that off. And with that, I would entertain a motion for Article 1 of the special town meeting.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2015 for various accounts in the general fund. All is set forth on the document entitled Article Number 1, Special Town Meeting Transfers, June 6th, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the motion?
I would. This article is a housekeeping article that we do every year. This is to pretty much balance the budget from fiscal year 15 where we make transfers from certain accounts to cover some of our deficits. The major deficits we have every year include the snow and ice deficit, which you'll see also on page 2. We have some additional transfers from funds that just weren't used over to certain contracted services, including the assessors and the town accountants that we have contracted out as well.
Thank you. If I could get a copy of that?
And actually, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If I may, I actually need to clarify that these are fiscal year 16 costs. That's our next one. We'll deal with 15.
Excellent. So this is fiscal year 16, budget changes to wrap up the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
In general. Great. And with a copy, I'll ask the finance committee for their recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee does recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this from the floor? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll go to a vote. For this one? For this one, if you could hold up a purple card if you are voting yes. All those in favor of the motion for Article 1, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. I wasn't sure if that was a wave or not, but I declare the motion carries. Article 2?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $105,956 to increase the amount appropriated under Article 6 of the June 9th, 2014 annual town meeting for the fiscal year 2015 transportation assessment for the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the motion?
Yes. This is the article where we attempted to have a special town meeting in the fall to transfer the transportation funds back to the school. In the 2015 transportation assessment to the towns, there were some 9C cuts that happened in the budget from the State House. Some of those cuts were restored. This is to restore that money back to the school system for increases that the state had received or had given to the school district for additional transportation that the town of Lakeville and the town of Freetown had held back. The town of Freetown has voted their share of it at their special town meeting or their annual town meeting last year. We were to vote it at our special town meeting in the fall. This is to clear that article up once and for all.
All right, thank you. And if we could have a copy, I'll ask the FinCom for their recommendation.
The FinCom did recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the floor? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, this is a two-thirds vote. I'm going to ask the tellers. Actually, let me explain something. Two-thirds votes typically require a counted vote if there's any opposition just so that we can show for the record exactly what the count was. However, I'm going to do a test to see if we, as a town meeting, would like to pass this unanimously. So what I'm going to do is ask for a voice vote to do... To see if we have unanimous acclamation for this motion. If not, and feel free to vote in the negative, but if we don't have any negatives, then we'll move on and declare it unanimous consent. So, all those in favor of Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to Article 2? Hearing none, I declare it passed by unanimous consent. Thank you. I believe Board of Assessors?
I was hoping one of the selectmen read this for me, but I guess that's not going to happen. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to accept the provision of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, in exempting personal property from taxation if such property has a value in excess of $5,000 beginning in fiscal year 2017 or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the motion?
Sure. A large number of the communities in the state are starting to put thresholds in place for minimal assessed values. The issue is that between the cost to actually send out the bills and send out collection notices on those that... And demand notices on those that don't pay far outweighs the revenue the town ends up taking in. When the assessed amount gets redistributed, the actual tax rate increase for everyone else is negligible. It actually comes out to .006, so most people won't even notice anything in their tax bill and it actually saves the town money in the long run.
Okay, thank you. And if we could have a copy of the actual motion? And what is the FinCom's recommendation?
The FinCom voted unanimously to recommend approving this.
Are you folks hearing that?
No.
How about that? Can't get any closer. Is it me?
There you go. That was it.
It's me.
Go ahead and make your recommendation again. I don't think they heard it.
The finance committee does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. That's great. Any further discussion on Article 3 from the floor? Just waiting to see if these folks are heading for a microphone or a seat. Looks like seated is. So, seeing no one rising to the microphone, again, if you can raise your cards, all those in favor of Article 3, please raise your cards. Thank you. Please put them down. Any opposed to Article 3, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. I declare the motion passes by a majority. And Article 4?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws relative to the Council on Aging by deleting the text shown below as stricken and adding the text shown as bold below and by inserting the bylaw as amended into Article 3 as Section 27 as set forth in the warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to the motion?
I would. This... This motion is really to amend the general bylaws for the Council on Aging because we need to reduce the quorum from 15 members to 11 members. We've been having a difficult time getting a quorum for the Council on Aging when they meet. It also adds an alternate member as well and establishes some requirements for attendance at some of these meetings.
Okay, thank you. And we'll need a copy and if the FinCom can give their recommendation?
The FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the floor? Seeing no one rising to the microphone, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Anyone who is opposed to Article 4, please raise your cards. I see none. I declare it passes unanimously. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Do I have a sec? Thank you. Motion to dissolve has been made. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have a six-minute break to wait for 7 o'clock so we can officially start the annual town meeting. So if you just bear with me for six minutes, exactly at 7, we will begin the annual town A quorum being present, this annual town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 19th, 2016. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws and the warrant was posted by Constable Jonathan Parr on May 20th, 2016. Therefore, I declare that this requirements of the Chapter 2, Section 3 of the general bylaws of the town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. For the meeting, we have appointed... The town clerk and I have appointed the following as tellers to count votes tonight. On the left side is Dick Scott. Right side, Bob Palucci. Center and front stage is Neil Bornstein. And the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws, and the press... By precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume "town meeting time" as a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask if you seek recognition from the moderator, which I am the moderator. You go to one of those two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving. If I find that a speaker repeats the same points or that he or she has raised or even previous speakers have raised, I will ask you to move on to the next person. Behavior, shouting from seats, booing and cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the finance committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. Voting cards. You should have been issued a voted card when you came in as a registered voter. I will ask that you hold up the purple colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you're... When you vote this evening and you were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of the vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting cards will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has a yes and no printed on it. This is printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we have it in there just in case. Do not lose your voting card. You cannot get another one this evening. Few words about motions to reconsider or rescind to be read into the annual town meeting. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if the new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium. And then finally, I would like to make the introductions of the stage members. I think I forgot myself last time. I'm Norman Oral, moderator. To my left is our town clerk, Lillian Drain, our town administrator, Rita Garbutt, our town council Greg Corbo, selectman Mitzi Hollenbeck, selectman Aaron Burke, selectman John Powderley, finance committee chair Mike Petruzzo, finance committee George Velopolis... Lahopolis, finance committee Don Holland, finance committee Joe Fleming, and finance committee Ryan Trahan. They tried to switch seats on me, so that's why I gotta slow down a little bit. It is my understanding that we did run out of town warrants printed. This is typically done as a courtesy so that it helps you with the town meeting to follow. But since we did, my understanding, run out, I will not bother to ask if everyone has one. If you could share and you want to pass one along, if you have several family members you want to pass one to someone else seeing near you, feel free to do that. Instead, before we make a motion, I will read the article. We have... I have three non-residents that may be called upon to speak or may wish to speak. It is up to you, the town meeting members, to vote approval of their speaking. The three folks are Richard Medeas, Superintendent of Schools, Jamie Viveros, who is the Lakeville library director, and she's from Easton, not Freetown, Jeremy Peck, Superintendent of Streets. So I would entertain a motion to allow those three individuals to speak as non-residents.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by unanimous acclamation. Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to move on to the articles. So I will read, rather than waiving the reading of the articles, since not everyone has a copy, I will read each article as it comes up. Article 1, as posted, is to see if the town will vote to determine the salaries of all elected officials and to make appropriation or take any action relative thereto. Do I have a motion for Article 1?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $162,193 to pay the salaries of all elected officials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This article is necessary to pay all the elected officials, as is stated, including the tax collector treasurer, the board of assessors, the board of health, the town clerk, and the board of selectmen.
All right. Thank you. And if you could send a copy down, I'll just, for the record, ask the FinCom recommendation?
The FinCom does recommend approving this article.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask anyone to speak, I am going to read the totals that are included in this As I read the total, if you have a question, you can do this from your seat. Please say the word "hold" or yell "hold" out and I'll make note and then we'll come back to that and you can come to the microphone and ask your question. For this article, there aren't many, but the totals are for the elected officials. Selectmen personnel, $13,995. Assessors personnel, $5,000. Board of Health personnel, $5,000. Treasurer and collector personnel, $73,354. Town clerk personnel, $64,844. Is there any further discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
David McReeny, Dunbar Road. I have no problem with these... We're calling them salaries, but they're really stipends for most of the elected officials other than the full-time employees. My question is, for those people like the selectmen, the assessors, the board of health, who are not full-time employees but are getting a modest stipend here, are there any other benefits that the town pays for these employees? And I'm thinking of health and retirement.
Okay. Is there someone at the table who would want to answer that?
I believe there is no addition.
Let me try again. There you go. How about that?
Nope. Turn it sideways, Mike.
Sideways?
Yeah. Sorry.
Again?
Closer.
Closer, I'm gonna be taking a bite out of it. Say again?
No.
No?
Let's...
Mike, we... We'll take it. We'll answer the question for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm acting as Mike. Actually, it's...
Actually, as elected officials, we are eligible with a stipend position for health insurance, which is paid at the same rate that we would be paying if we were full-time employees. The contribution, I believe, is seventy-five percent by the town, twenty-five percent for the individuals. All elected officials that receive a stipend are eligible for health insurance. Other than that, we are not eligible for pension benefits. The cutoff is actually five thousand dollars to be eligible for pension benefits going forward. The finance committee recommended this article and actually gave an increase specifically to the board of selectmen in an amount that was less than what would be available for pension benefits, so we didn't have any long-term issues such as pension benefits. We're also not eligible for health insurance for life. You'll hear a little bit about that later as we get into the OPEB liability.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this article? I see no one rising to the microphones. This article requires a majority vote. So, all those in favor of article one, please raise your purple cards and hold them there. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to article one, please raise your cards. I declare, you can put them down now. I declare the article passes by a majority. Article two reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any action relative thereto." Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate eight million nine-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars, appropriate two-hundred-twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars from free cash, and transfer sixteen thousand five-hundred-and-fifteen from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, and transfer fifty thousand from the state, from the sale of land proceeds, the six-hundred-and-thirteen acres on Howland Road, to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to the article? Oh, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Could you, would you mind speaking to the article?
This is, you know, the major part of the budget that doesn't involve the regional school district. It's to legally raise and appropriate the funds to run the town for the next fiscal year.
All right, thank you. And while you pass a copy down, could you give us the FinCon, Finance Committee's recommendation, please?
The, the finance committee did recommend approving this article.
Thank you. So once again, I am going to read groups of totals. And as I read them, if you have a question that you would like answered about that grouping, please yell out "hold." I will make a note, and then we'll come back later and go over any that had a hold on them, and you can ask your question at the microphone, okay? So, I will go through them. Select, yes. Selectmen personnel, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Selectmen expenses, seventeen thousand dollars. Finance committee expenses, nine hundred dollars. Accounting personnel, forty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nineteen. Accounting expenses, one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars. Assessors personnel, sixty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Assessors expenses, one-hundred-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Treasurer and collector personnel, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. Treasurer and collector expenses, fifty thousand dollars. Law expenses, forty thousand dollars. Wage and personnel board, total wages, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Town clerk personnel, fifty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Town clerk expenses, three-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Elections expenses, seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Registration expenses, twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten dollars. Conservation commission personnel, thirty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Conservation commission expenses, three-thousand-one-hundred dollars. Planning board expenses, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Appeals board expenses, three-hundred dollars. Historic town house expenses, four-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Town office and fire station expenses, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. Town reports expenses, six-hundred dollars. Cable TV advisory expenses, five thousand dollars. Other general government expenses, fourteen thousand and two dollars. Police department personnel, one-million-six-hundred-and-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Police department expenses, one-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-forty-nine dollars. Fire department personnel, one-million-one-hundred-sixty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Fire department expenses, one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Building department personnel, one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-fifty-six dollars. Building department expenses, five-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. Gas inspector expenses, eleven thousand dollars. Plumbing inspector expenses, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Sealer, weights and measure expenses, one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Electrical inspector expense, twenty-five thousand dollars. Special assistant, health inspector expense, three thousand dollars. Animal inspector expense, six-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Emergency management expense, eight thousand dollars. Animal shelter, animal control officer personnel, eighty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Animal shelter, animal control officer expenses, nineteen thousand dollars. Highway department personnel, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. Highway department expenses, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Snow and ice personnel, fifteen thousand dollars. Snow and ice expenses, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Street lighting expenses, twenty-three thousand dollars. Cemetery services expenses, twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Board of health personnel, one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. Board of health expenses, nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Board of health visiting nurse expense, two thousand dollars. Council on Aging personnel, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Council on Aging expenses, twenty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Veterans benefits personnel, fourteen thousand and one dollar. Veterans benefits expenses, two-hundred-and-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Library personnel, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. Library expenses, one-hundred-and-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Total historic library building, four thousand dollars. Historic, historical commission expenses, five hundred dollars. Total debt service, eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Regional assessments expense, one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Unemployment expense, one thousand dollars. Total employee benefits, one-million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. And total property and liability insurance, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. Thank you. Are there any, I heard no holes. Is there any further discussion on article two, which is the main budget? Seeing no one rise to a microphone, this is a majority vote. I'd ask you to raise your cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Hold them there for a moment. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposing article two, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I declare it passes unanimously. Thank you. Article three reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, end or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the park department for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, and make appropriation or take any action relative thereto." Do I have a motion for article three?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-forty-five dollars, five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for the Park Department Enterprise Fund as follows. Fifty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy to be raised from Park Department retained earnings. One-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars from estimated Park Department receipts. Said sums to be allocated between salaries and expenses of the Park Department for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, as indicated in the finance committee report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Would you care to speak to the article?
Just that it's the base budget that the Park Department presented, and the selectmen and the, excuse me, finance committee are recommending approval on.
The finance committee recommends approval. Thank you.
Yes, it does.
All right. I'm going to read a few totals. Again, this one's much shorter. Again, say "hold" if you have a question. Park enterprise personnel is one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. Park enterprise expense is ninety-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, which gives us for the total park enterprise revenue, an offset of a negative in this case, two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to balance. Heard no holes. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing no one rising to a microphone, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of article three, please raise your cards and hold them. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to article three, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I declare the article passes unanimously. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, end or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the landfill transfer station for the period, fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any action relative thereto." I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars for the landfill enterprise as follows. One-hundred thousand dollars to be raised by taxation. Eight thousand dollars from the amount appropriated under Article ten of the annual town meeting held on June eleventh, two thousand seven. Two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars to be raised from estimated landfill receipts. Said sums to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the landfill for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, as indicated in the finance committee report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Much like the Park Department, it's the necessary article to fund the operation of the landfill for the coming fiscal year.
And the finance committee recommend?
The finance committee does, does recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. I have a few totals to read. Again, hold if you have a question. Landfill transfer enterprise personnel, one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Landfill transfer enterprise expense, two-hundred-and-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-two dollars. Landfill transfer cap expense, fourteen thousand dollars. And a total landfill enterprise revenue of negative three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars to offset the expenses. Are there any further questions on this article? See no one rising. This is a majority vote again. All those in favor of article four, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to article four, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes by a majority. Thank you. Let me put your cards down. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, end or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the water enterprise fund for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any action relative thereto." And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for the water enterprise fund. Said sum to be allocated to the expenses of the water department enterprise fund for the fiscal period July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen inclusive, as indicated in the finance committee report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
This is necessary for us to appropriate the funds to pay the, what we hope is the final payment on the, on the water tower. Subsequent to this, I guess, the deal with Taunton is supposed to be finalized during the month of June, but we don't have a definitive answer or document in hand, and if, ultimately, this will be reimbursed by the Taunton Water District to cover the payment of this, again, final payment as we know.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
This is kind of a continuation of the sale of the water tower that happened at the last annual town meeting, where we have been working with the city of Taunton. We went to special legislation. We were able to get the state to agree to allow us to sell the water tower to Taunton. We have been working out the details with city council and with the city solicitor. There's been a couple kind of turnovers or additional personnel, I guess, in Taunton that we've been working with. We anticipate to have this completely closed by the end of June. In the event that we do close this at the end of June, we will not need to make the payment that's due in mid-July for the next payment. In the event that we are unable to close it by the end of June, city of Taunton is meeting next week on this as well, that we will end up adjusting the amount that's owed to us, and we will receive it back from the city of Taunton in conjunction with the sale. So the sale has gone through. We're just waiting for the final paperwork to be kind of taken care of, and we anticipate that to be done by June thirtieth, so we will not have to actually pay this. But we wanted to make sure in case there was anything that happened, that this was actually put into this article so that we were able to pay it, but we will be reimbursed for this as well.
All right, thank you. And could I get a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee does recommend approval.
And we just need the motion if you haven't sent it down. So once again, I'm gonna read a few totals. The water enterprise personnel is zero dollars. The water enterprise expense is four thousand thirty dollars. And the water enterprise capital improvements is two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, for a total water enterprise revenue of negative two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Are there any further questions or comments on this article? See no one rising to a microphone. This is again a majority vote. All those in favor of article five, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to article five, please raise your cards. I see none, I declare it passes unanimously. Article six. First, I'll have to read the article into the town meeting.
Oh, you're gonna read the whole thing before I need to say anything?
Yes.
All right.
As we ran out of copies. So, Article six. "To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding the following new section or take any action relative thereto." Town and Lakeville Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Section one, purpose: Under this bylaw, the Conservation Commission here and after the commission duly appointed by the board of selectmen shall administer and enforce the provisions of the Wetland Protection Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, here and after the WPA, and any amendments made thereto following the current code of Massachusetts regulations promulgated by the Department of Environmental Protection, three-ten, CMR-ten, of the regulations. The commission shall also administer and enforce the provisions in this bylaw as herein in below specified as additional protections to Lakeville's wetland resources. Section two, jurisdiction: Except as permitted by the commission or as provided for in this bylaw, no person shall commence to remove, fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, discharge into, or otherwise alter any wetland resource listed in the WPA or specified below. Wetland protection zone, zone. "In order to minimize changes to the natural quantity and quality of the flow of groundwater and surface water to wetlands, and to provide a portion of adjacent upland necessary for the survival of most wetland-dependent wildlife, there shall be a twenty-five-foot wetland protection zone on the upland sides of any wetland resource. In this zone, there shall be no, no grading, no filling, or removal of soil, no dumping of yard waste or other debris, no paving or surfacing of any sort, and no removal removal or destruction of vegetation except for invasive exotic plants, and no planting except for restoration of indigenous plants. Lawns, gardens, landscaped, or other developed areas which existed prior to the effective date of this bylaw shall not be subject to this bylaw. The commission may permit minor pruning trimming for vista and/or footpaths, or the placement of non-obtrusive boardwalks, railings, boundary markers, or stepping stones in this zone. Other activities may be permitted on a case-by-case basis, provided the commission deems the impact of said permitted activities to be minimal. Isolated Land Subject to Flooding, I L S F. Isolated land subject to flooding shall mean an isolated depression or closed basin without an inlet or an outlet. It is an area which at least once a year confines standing water to a volume of at least one-quarter acre-foot, parentheses, ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety cubic feet, end parentheses, with an average depth of at least six inches. The boundary of isolated land subject to flooding is the perimeter of the largest observed or recorded volume of water confined in said area. I L S F shall not be filled except as permitted by the commission, and shall be given the same protection that bordering vegetative wetlands are given in the WPA and its regulations, including a hundred-foot buffer zone with minimum disturbance. Vernal Pools. As habitat-supporting unique wildlife, vernal pools shall be considered wetland resources. No activity will be allowed within one hundred feet of the boundary of the vernal pool unless it can be shown by the applicant that the activity will bring no harm to the vernal pool. The term "vernal pool" shall include, in addition to scientific definitions found in WPA Regulation, parentheses, three-ten CMR-ten point oh four, end parentheses, any confined basin or depression not occurring in existing lawns, gardens, landscaped areas, or driveways which in most years holds water for a minimum of two contiguous months during the spring and/or summer, contains at least two hundred cubic feet, parentheses, or zero point zero zero four six acre-feet, end parentheses, of water at some time during the most years, and provides essential breeding and rearing habitat functions for amphibian, reptile, or other vernal pool community species regardless of whether the site has been certified by the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. The boundary of the resource area for a vernal pool shall be the mean annual high water line defining the depression. The commission shall consider evidence that the ponding area does not hold water for at least two continuous months when not in a period of drought, and that vernal pool species do not breed or have not bred in the ponding area due to incompatible persistent conditions at the site. Section Three, Enforcement. The commission shall have the authority to enforce this bylaw as regulations and provision of any permits issued thereunder by violation notices, enforcement orders, under the town's noncriminal disposition section of its general bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter four, A, Section twenty-one D, and civil and criminal court actions. Any police officer or their conservation agent shall have the authority to enforce this bylaw. Any person who violates provisions of this bylaw may be ordered to restore the property to its original condition and take other actions deemed necessary to remedy such violations, or may be fined, or both. The commission may, parentheses, but not, shall not be required to, in parentheses, waive strict compliance with this bylaw if the commission finds that the proposed work, including proposed mitigation, will have no significant adverse impact on interests protected by this bylaw. Where the commission to determine that any activity is in violation of this bylaw and/or permit issued thereunder, or hereunder, the commission may, one, issue an enforcement order and/or restoration order, and/or, two, hold a public hearing to consider whether the landowner should be fined for the violation. Restoration of the area to its pre-existing condition shall be required under restoration order. If, after the public hearing, the commission votes to issue a fine, the fine schedule shall be one hundred dollars for the first offense, two hundred dollars for the second offense, and three hundred dollars for the third and each subsequent offense. Each provision of the bylaw, its regulations, permits, or administrative orders violated shall constitute a separate offense. Section Four, Exemptions. The exemptions for agriculture, aquaculture, public utilities, and public safety as are granted under the WPA and its regulations shall be granted under this bylaw. Any residential business or institutional building or customary pertinence thereto, such as lawns, gardens, landscaped, or other developed areas where such structure or pertinence existed prior to the effective date of this bylaw, shall not be subject to the bylaw. Section Five, Relation to the Wetlands Protection Act. This bylaw utilizes the home rule authority of this municipality to protect additional resource areas for additional values with additional standards and procedures stricter than those of the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapters one thirty-one, Section forty, and regulations thereunder, three-ten CMR-ten point zero zero. That was the article. So, I would entertain a motion on the article.
Martha Schroeder, Three River Bend. "Mr. Moderator, on the behalf of a group of residents who signed the petition to put this bylaw to a vote at this town meeting, I move that the town adopt the Wetlands Protection Bylaw as it is written in Article Six in the warrant." I was going to waive reading the whole article, but...
You don't need to now.
It's been done.
So, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you care to speak to the article?
I do. Um, I had something written out. I'm going to try to shorten it because some of it will repeat what has already been read. Uh, but I'd like to give a little bit of the history of this article. In two thousand and six, the town voted down the Wetlands Protection Bylaw proposed by the Conservation Commission. It was long and confusing to many people. There were a lot of misconceptions as to what it entailed. Since then, the commission has tried to produce a better version, but in recent years, this effort has been thwarted by a minority of newer members. However, Lakeville continues to be a very wet town with growing pressure to develop land in ways that threaten wildlife and water quality and quantity. This is happening at a time when the Department of Environmental Protection, which provides the only teeth to the Wetlands Protection Act, has been hit by severe budget cuts and reduced personnel. Therefore, a group of residents are presenting to you tonight a more concise version of a wetlands bylaw. It should be noted upfront, despite any rumors to the contrary, that all property that is currently developed, lawns, driveway structures, landscaping, et cetera, is specifically exempted from the bylaw, and any agricultural activities that are currently existed from the W, from the Wetlands Protection Act and its regulations are also exempt. A few words about the twenty-five-foot bordering, um, the Wetlands Protection Zone, that would be the twenty-five feet bordering any wetland. This is a regional that is vital to wildlife, terrestrial, amphibian, aquatic, and also bird life. It's also a region important to the movement of surface and groundwater. The intent in this bylaw is not to ask people to restore anything to a natural state, only to protect what is currently still natural. Please note that the Conservation Commission, under the Wetlands Bylaw, I mean, under the Wetlands Protection Act, already requires filing for activities in the first hundred feet. This bylaw just gives a heads-up that that first twenty-five feet is to be left alone. The bylaw also gives isolated water subject to flooding, um, areas that are significant to wildlife and also to groundwater recharge, the same status that the Wetlands Protection Act gives to all other wetlands. Under existing rules, an isolated land that is subject to flooding cannot be filled, but it has no buffer zone. This bylaw would require that for, as, just as any other wetland resource, anyone with a project that came within a hundred feet of an isolated land subject to flooding would have to file an application to the Conservation Commission and give credible evidence, uh, to the Conservation Commission that their activity would not degrade habitat or degrade the water resource. And last, the bylaw would help to protect viable vernal pool habitat, giving it the same wetland status and protections that we give to all other wetlands. This habitat is vital to a number of fauna species, including the iconic wood frogs that quack like a duck in the early spring. Under current law, vernal pools can be destroyed if they're not officially certified. Note that this bylaw would be enforced by a local board that is appointed by a locally-elected Board of Selectmen rather than a state agency. As is already...
We lost the microphone here. Can you test that again? Can you test the microphone?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right. As has already been stated, sites that are already developed are exempt. Don't worry about picking up branches off your lakefront property, as someone was just asking me. It's exempt. And legitimate agricultural activity is also exempt, as is provided by the Wetlands Protection Act. Now, I have heard that this is an issue of government overreach versus property rights, but as we are talking about something that is the commonwealth...
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up because I think...
I am wrapping up.
It's getting beyond speaking to it.
I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
What is at stake is more an issue of special interests versus responsible governance.
All right. Thank you. And you may want to stick by if there's questions. Um, before we go to the audience, I'd ask the Finance Committee for their recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article.
Okay, thank you. So, anyone wishing to speak to this article can make your way to the microphone. I would, just as a note, um, if you have a question, please state it to me rather than to an individual, and then I'll find, I'll figure out who should be the best to answer the question if you have a question. Again, um, if you find that the comment you're going to make is the same thing the person ahead of you made, I think the point's been made. So, we'll start off. Um, you were first.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Derek Maxey, uh, one of the Conservation Commission members appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And when you first read this, I actually wasn't sure we were still in America. Uh, and it's like, this is from a whole nother country for me. But I just wanted to address a few things. Uh, one of the main things is Conservation Commission, Lakeville has not taken any action on this, uh, nor had held any public hearings on this, so we weren't able to hear what the public had. But a few things that I noticed when I was actually reading this bylaw myself, which I would probably call an upland's bylaw, uh, but this is a petition by a small minority of citizens, which I respect their decision to do a petition. However, the petition, again, it was not endorsed by Lakeville Concom, and I believe this could be in violation of an open meeting law to consistently bring this subject up at every meeting without even having a hearing process. This is an ongoing thing we've been having. But I'd like to go to the bylaw itself. Section One, Purpose. It states, "The commission shall administer and enforce the provisions of this bylaw." There is no "may" in that sentence. Therefore, I believe there is no possible way to give a waiver for any of these, uh, these wetlands decisions. On the second part, Section Two, Jurisdiction, it states, "Except as permitted by the commission, no one shall commence to remove, fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, discharge, et cetera." In fact, that makes the commission the only permitting authority, and DEP, Army Court, EPA, et cetera, cannot step in to help because any appeal of the Concom goes to Superior Court, which is going to cost the town money as well as the resident. Uh, another part is the Wetland Protection Zone. It states that there shall be a twenty-five-foot wetland protection zone on the sides of any wetland resource areas. Outside the wetlands, uh, area is considered uplands. So now, this is reaching into our uplands and telling us now we can't do on our upland side of our property. Uh, so, there's no definition of that zone, but it does state, "In this zone, there shall be no removal, fill, and dredge, and, again, build upon, degrade, and discharge, and dumping of yard waste, or removal or destruction of vegetation." The wording has changed from one to the next, so it's gonna, it's already getting confusing. Uh, however, you can remove invasive exotic plants. My question is, what are they? And they're not even listed here. It also says you can plant for restoration of indigenous plants, but what is the definition of that? And how can you replant when the bylaw specifically prohibits it? Furthermore, the Lakeville bylaw only, this proposed Lakeville bylaw only allows what is permitted. If it's not permitted, then it is prohibited if you go to, uh, if you look at the town bylaws. It also states, however, existing lawns, gardens, landscapes, et cetera, that were done prior to the date, which could be tonight, are not subject to this bylaw. So if it is tonight, or is it town meeting or election, uh, does that mean starting tomorrow if this gets approved, you can't expand your lawn, you can't expand your garden or anything like that? And that goes for everybody. And where Lakeville is forty percent, uh, ponds and streams are wetlands, that, that basically is everybody that's in this audience, all the families and the ten thousand people that live in Lakeville. Uh, and again, it talks, uh, it also states, "The commission may permit minor pruning trimming for vista and/or footpath, or the placement of non-obtrusive boardwalks, railings, boundary markers, stepping stones, et cetera." Again, there is no exception in this jurisdiction in Section Two because it says they shall enforce it, not "may." Uh, and if they have the authority, then the commission cannot permit docks, ramps, decks, and/or replacement structures because even they can't grant anything in the twenty-five-foot buffer zone because it's strictly prohibited. So, you know, you wouldn't be able to come to the Concom and ask for a dock or decks or replace anything. You'd be strictly prohibited from doing that. Then it states, "Other activities may be permitted on a case-by-case basis, provided the commission deems the impact of said permitted activity to be minimal." Again, "may" is not an option because the first sentence says, "They shall enforce this bylaw," and there's no option for them to waive after that because as far as the bylaws state, they have to do it. There's, there's no options. Uh, and they say case by, you know, it says case by case, you know, you got precedent, what about arbitrary? Uh, so now I want to move on a little bit to the, uh, isolated land subject to flooding, where it says "shall" mean any isolated depression or closed basin without an inlet or an outlet. This could mean everyone who has a fish pond, maybe their driveway that floods after one, one rainstorm, the side of the driveway, they might be prohibited from that. How will the High Department clean these basements? How will Mass. DOT clean these bas, these basins on the side of the road? Uh, how would Mass. DOT even repair our roads if they're close to any, if they're within twenty-five feet of any of these, these, you know, these wetland areas? Uh, and then it goes on to say, "It is an area that only once a year confines sand and water to a volume of at least one-quarter acre-foot, which is ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety cubic feet, with an average depth of at least six inches." So, once a year, one storm, you know, how about the two thousand and nine floods? We would all be in, considered in a wetlands at that point. Uh, and how long? One hour? Who, and who determines this? We've got one part-time, uh, agent that's going to go out and start looking at these puddles that people have in their yards. Uh, so, the boundaries of this flooding is the perimeter of the largest observed or recorded volume of water confined in said area. And again, who's going to determine that? Goes on to say, "The isolated land subject to flooding shall not be filled except as permitted by the conservation, and shall be given the same protection that bordering vegetative wetlands are given in the Wetlands Protection Act and its regulations, including the one-hundred-foot buffer zone with minimal disturbance." Again, the commission cannot grant permission because the first sentence says, "They shall enforce this bylaw." Then it states that even the commission could find a grant, could find a way to grant permission. It refers back to the regulation. Again, they can't. The commission has no such regulations to refer to, so we can't even create a, we don't even have a regulation that we can go back and do this to. Uh, and then it's like, what's going to come next? So, then you go on to the hundred-foot buffer, that now the isolated land subject to flooding has more protection than a wetlands because you can't be within twenty-five feet of that. I'll try to speed this up.
Yeah, I, I mean, you made a lot of points.
Okay, and, and I'll just...
So if you could just wrap up a summary of, uh, in general.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is just wrap up the enforcement side of it. So, forgetting all that, "The commission shall have the authority to enforce this bylaw, its regulations, and provisions of any permits issued thereunder by violation notices, enforcement orders, under the town's noncriminal disposition section of this general bylaw." Uh, and then it goes on to state, "In civil and criminal court actions, any police officer or the conservation agent shall have the authority," not the commission, the agent, and it's, it's just, it's way overreaching for me, and I would recommend to the residents of Lakeville to vote in, against, uh, this bylaw.
All right, thank you. Now, out of that, I did have one question that I found, um, and that was that after this bylaw takes effect, if it's voted positively tonight, um, the question was, would any of these activities be allowed after the vote? So there's a statement in here that says, um, anything that exists before this is adopted is okay, anything after it, is that correct? I don't know, would the town council have an opinion on that, or, or...
Thank you through you, Ms. Moderator, Greg Corbo, Town Council. Um, so, when a bylaw is, is passed at town meeting, if it's passed at town meeting, the next step is for it to go to the Office of the Attorney General for review. Um, it typically takes approximately ninety days for the Attorney General to review. If the Attorney General approves the bylaw, it gets sent back to the town clerk for publication. At that point, the bylaw becomes effective. So, if the dividing line here is the effective date of the bylaw, once it's advertised by the, by the town clerk, the bylaw becomes effective. Anything built before that date would be allowable under the bylaw, and then nothing further would be allowable unless it's in accordance with the terms of the bylaw.
Thank you. So the changes that, uh, or the property as it stands now before the adoption would be okay, but it's possible that if you were to add to those similar activities after the bylaw, it would be under this bylaw. Um, I'll go over to this microphone.
Mr. Moderator, Maureen Candido. Um, Derek, pretty much A to Z, everything.
Derek, pretty much A to Z, everything on there, so I only have a few things to add. In the 1960s, Massachusetts was the first to adopt wetlands protection acts and standards. It's the state with probably the most protections in the country right now. All of these additional protections are indeed overreach and almost unenforceable with the amount of infractions that would be incurred due to the fact that Lakeville is a town full of water, and everything is touching water at some point. Again, as Derek had said, it makes it impossible for people to build, it makes it impossible for them to modify their property, and it makes it impossible for us to grow in a sustainable way, the town of Lakeville.
Okay, and we'll go over to this side.
Mr. Moderator, Town of Lakeville, Bill Markson from Belzberg Road. I'm particularly concerned about the Wetland Protection Zone. I believe it constitutes a taking of upland land. Presently, under the present law, there's a buffer zone from the wetland, but I can go into that zone if I take the proper precautions directed by the Conservation Commission, and I can do construction. But under this law, I wouldn't even be able to go there. I wouldn't be able to drive a truck, I wouldn't be able to drive equipment. So it's taking 25 feet of my land, or anybody's land. The other factors that we should consider here are the fact that this law has come in under the radar by some citizens who didn't, it didn't go before the Conservation Commission, which apparently disapproves it. The Finance Committee disapproves it. I think there are a number of people here that disapprove it. I think this should be referred to the Conservation Commission. I don't think we should act upon it at this time. And I move that the motion be tabled, the article be tabled.
Tabled, and exactly, is your motion to table...
It's a motion to table.
Yeah, table till later time in this meeting?
Table is table.
Or table indefinitely?
Table indefinitely.
Thank you. So you've made a motion to table indefinitely?
I think I should be allowed to speak before you go ahead and shut everybody up.
Actually, Mr. Moderator, sorry, but I'll run the meeting, thank you.
Yep.
We have a motion to table. Let me just check here. I believe this would require 2/3rds. The motion to table, I believe, was seconded. It is a non-debatable motion. It is non-amendable. It requires a 2/3rds vote of this body. It may be reconsidered, but because it's been made, we must dispose of this motion. So, for understanding, what a motion to table indefinitely means is that there would be no more discussion of this article, and the town meeting has decided, we're not even going to vote a yes or no on this article. It is removed, or it's disposed of, would be the word to use. So, it's non-debatable. I know you're chomping at the bit.
I just want to ask a question.
It's non-debatable. So, what we'll be doing is asking the tellers to do a count, because this is a 2/3rds vote. So, a yes vote for this will be to say, "We don't want to hear this article tonight. We don't want to debate it any further." And basically, in essence, it's a no, without actually voting on the article. It would basically dispose of this article from town meeting, we would move on to the next article. So that's a yes vote. A no vote would not table it, and it would require 2/3rds of the meeting to table it. A no vote, if more than 1/3rds of the votes says no to tabling it, then we'll go back to discussing the original article and eventually voting on that. So that's what you're voting on right now, is a motion to table indefinitely. So, if the tellers are in place to count, all those in favor of the motion to table this article, please raise your cards. And hold them there until accounted. If you're questioning, this is it. If you vote yes, this article is over for this town meeting. It can be rescinded, given what we've already read into about rescinding. Did someone give me a count? I missed it. 89. 67, Mr. Plucci?
Yes.
And left?
66.
66. Please put your cards down, thank you. If you're voting no to tabling this article, please raise your cards and leave it raised until you've been counted. 37.
16.
Thank you, 16.
23.
23. Okay, let us do some math, and you can put your cards down if you haven't already. Okay, the motion to table indefinitely has met the 2/3rds vote, so it is passed, and we will move on to Article 7. Thank you. Okay, Article 7, as written in the warrant, reads, "To see if the town will vote to accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said Act included in the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said Act, and that the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2018, and that the town hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said Act. Exemption 1, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate-income senior housing in the town, as defined in Section 2 of said Act. Exemption 2, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. Exemption 3, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class 3 commercial property and Class 4 industrial property, as defined in Section 2A of Chapter 59. Or take any other action relative thereto." The written warrant does include an explanation, so I will read it. "Residents of Lakeville through the years consistently repeatedly express a wish to preserve our community and its rural character. The Community Preservation Act is a way that we can create a steady funding source for preserving and improving our community's character and quality of life. We are missing out on this opportunity for the average household valued at $245,000. A homeowner would pay about $20 per year. Please place the Community Preservation Act on the November 8th ballot." Again, that's just reading from the written warrant into the record of the town meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Sarah Kulikovich.
Yes.
I move that the town accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And would you care to speak to the article?
Yes, thank you. "The Community Preservation Act, or CPA, is a way that we can create a steady funding source for preserving and improving our community's character and quality of life. The way it works is the first 10% of CPA funds go to historical projects, 10% to open space, 10% to housing, and once those three buckets are filled, the remaining 70% can be voted into any of those three areas, or a fourth bucket, recreation projects. CPA funds are held not in the general fund, but in a separate account, an account which accrues and does not go away. The funds are controlled locally by you, through town vote, for smart growth projects, such as sidewalks and bike paths, boardwalks, and a walkable Lakeville. This creates a community that looks good for our health and well-being, as well as our pocketbooks. The CPA program funds projects that also target reducing urban sprawl, projects which ultimately keep our future taxes down. Imagine what a walkable Lakeville could do for attracting more visitors to our local businesses. CPA funds could also help maintain our Old Town Hall and our historical archaeological survey. It could bring electricity to the Peach Barn at Betty's Neck and open it up to events. Our parks could have bathrooms. The Cowboy Shack at Vigors, a town-owned property, would be funded by now. We could build up our town center and green spaces. The CPA is a way to break the loop of having all the work fall on the same limited number of volunteers over and over. These CPA projects can help alleviate the town budget. They are a way to move quickly on a vision rather than waiting years and years for funds to build up or to slowly piecemeal things together. Lakeville cannot afford to piecemeal things together. It's easy to look around and see that the rural character of our community is at risk. The CPA creates an economically sustainable plan. There is a dollar matching from the state, it's 29% next year, up from 19% thanks to federal support. However, the strength of the CPA program comes in leveraging other state, federal, and private funding. Your tax dollars do not have this magnitude of reach. Your tax dollars are for town services, not huge improvement projects, certainly not on this scale. The CPA is seed money that breaks the loop, asking the same people for money over and over again, and gives the town a boost. It attracts money from new and outside sources. Money follows money. Thus far, the CPA has leveraged more than $712 million. The CPA creates projects that bring even more money into our town in ways that help our town and preserve our character. Here are some examples. I've picked three out of a list, and then I'll wrap this up, I promise. In Peabody, they spent $162,000 on the rail trail and leveraged $1.36 million in a federal grant. West Bridgewater, our neighbors, spent $400,000 on the Anderson Farm and brought down $1.23 million in outside state and federal grants. Grafton spent $250,000 of its CPA funds on an open space and historic preservation project. They brought down $1.85 million from state, federal, and private sources. The CPA not only strengthens a community's financial outlook and local and economic activity, but it also helps create jobs. You don't have to look far to see it at work in places like Middleborough, Massachusetts, a town which only in recent years has surpassed Lakeville in its smart growth. Even some of the CPA's most formidable opponents in Middleborough have embraced the program and now sit on the local board that prepares CPA projects for town vote. Of the 160-plus towns in Massachusetts that have thus far adopted this Community Preservation Act, not one has voted it out. We are missing out on this opportunity. What would this cost us? According to our regional assessor, Harold Schied, for the average household valued at $304,000, a homeowner would pay about $28.83 per year. That's less than a cup of coffee each month. It's time for Lakeville to stop talking about preserving its rural character and start taking action. Please vote yes to place this CPA Act on the November 8th ballot."
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, yes, we do recommend approval of this article.
Alright, and I'll ask you, if you could step to the side, there are other folks waiting for the microphone.
Thank you.
Yes?
Carl Purse, Hill Street in Lakeville. I would like to remind the audience, if they did not already know, the CPA came up 10 years ago, was passed by town meeting to be voted on in the fall, and it was rejected by the voters by a 74% to 26%. I do not believe that the attitude in town has changed concerning the preservation of so many different things. Just the fact that there's already a list of things that the that the future CPA committee would want to have is... They've already thought about spending the money. Spending money that does come from our tax dollars. It is a tax on our property tax, regardless of how small it is. I know every time when a small tax comes up, it always comes saying, "Oh, it's just a cup of coffee every month," or "every week," or "every day," it's just a small amount. But I only have so many cups of coffee that I drank during a year, and I'm going to have to take away another cup of coffee because they're going to decide to tax me more. It should also be reminded that purchases of land, which can be done under the Community Preservation Act, also takes land off the tax hold because then it becomes town property instead of private property, which obviously would be taxed. Continually, as arguments that I know I've made publicly, it's not just, this is a matter of principle. Every time when any government comes up and says that it is going to tax in any way, they will always spend the money and always find a new way to spend it. Some of the things on here was mentioned that there are certain things that it has to be spent on. Community housing, whether it is affordable housing, subsidized housing, or anything related. I find it, I don't know what kind of project already exists or within Lakeville that we would need to create such a thing regarding the... No, excuse me. Regarding even just the preservation of land within the community. Excuse me, I'm not...
You can always come back.
I'm not used to talking so much. Excuse me, I'm not, I'm not used to talking so much. I find it hard to believe that there is not, one of the items is open space. I find it hard to believe that Lakeville does not have enough open space already. And not to say that we need to overdevelop the town. I believe that the town has done very well continually trying to keep space and overgrowth of any type. I'm sorry, also going back to the tax issue, this is not as advertised as free money coming from the state. It is already assessed through Registry of Deed fees. Therefore, it is taken from those who buy and sell property within the town of Lakeville and throughout the state. And then they ask you to take more money to, in order to get it back. In the private world, that is called extortion. So why the state would want to, why have to rely on taxing ourselves more just to get back funds that have come in? I'll concede to anybody else.
All right. Thank you. I'll go to this side.
Good evening. Erica Fleming, Colleen Drive. I just wanted to remind everyone, the CPA is an additional tax. I think here in Lakeville, we've made efforts to maintain open space and all of that rural feel for the community. We have Betty's Neck, we have Ted Williams Camp, we have the Tammerack. What else is left? Lakes. And I just don't feel that we need an additional tax, especially a tax where the funds are going to generate revenues that we can't control how they're spent. It's mandated here, then a committee's going to be put together, and they're going to bring the ideas to the floor, how we should spend the money. Not to mention, we have other services that need to be improved. We have a new police station that we're talking about down the road. I don't want an additional tax before we start funding that, so my vote is no.
All right, thank you. And over here, this microphone.
Mr. Moderator, Christopher Plunker from Baker Lane. Call it a surcharge, but this is nothing more than a tax override. If the CPA passes, the average single-family's tax bill will increase 40% more than the normal 2.5%. The proponents of this ballot question are trying to circumvent Proposition 2.5 to raise your taxes. The increase is calculated on the value of your house added to your tax bill, the definition of an override. CPA establishes an independent community preservation committee that is not answerable to any other elected or appointed committee. They will decide what priorities of the town are with respect to acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, for the acquisition, preservation, and rehabilitation of historic resources, and for the preservation and creation of affordable housing. These priorities will be set without any regard to the long-term financial goals and plans developed by our elected officials. In regards to the matching funds, the argument put forth by most of the proponents is that this is free state money, and they will reimburse the town by up to 40%. Nothing could be further from the truth. The fact is, from fiscal year 2002 to 2008, the community's received a 100% match of funds. However, in fiscal year 2009, the dollar amount dropped to 67%, and in 2010, it dropped 34%, and in 2011, it's dropped to 27%. And the latest unconfirmed numbers I have, it's somewhere around 25%. So residents, give yourself a tax break and vote no on this article. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And this side?
Maureen Candido. So a vote of yes today is only going to bring it to the rest of the town to vote on. I think it has merit. I think a lot of towns, I know Lakeville, I'm sorry, Middleborough has had a lot of success with it, and I think a yes vote would bring it to the rest of the town.
All right.
Mr. Moderator, Derek Maxey, One Cedar Berry Lane. And I just wanted to make a point earlier. We talked about on Article 2 that we sold some land that the town had bought quite a few years ago on Holland Road, and we took that money, and now it's going to go back into the general fund for something we don't, we have control here about. But I think the biggest thing is, Lakeville's a family. Anytime we want to do something, we get together, and we do it together, and everybody gets to talk about it and decide what they want. We Ted Williams Camp, we got Betty's Neck, and we got the Boyceville Camp. So I don't see a need for this. I think when, I think personally, Lakeville steps up whenever we ask them to. So I would vote down on this. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, to me, it's clear that this is another tax that we don't need because we've already been quite successful in preserving open space, and as was mentioned, the Ted Williams Camp, Betty's Neck. We've put agricultural preservation on the Wilkie Farm, on the Lydia Roach property. We don't need this, we don't need another tax.
Thank you.
Martin Gross, Monro Drive. I mean, we're talking about being taxed here. It's a tiny amount, $28. What do we get in return? Well, a partial match from the state, plus it's seed money for grant money that could take that small amount and multiply it severalfold. We will have a local commission that will be decided among Lakeville residents where they recommend the money to go, and then it's going to be voted at this meeting on whether to approve their recommendations. We're not giving up control. We're taking a small amount of money, multiplying it severalfold, and then giving the town meeting a chance to vote up or down. I think this is a terrific thing, and I can't see for a tiny bit of money how people would want to vote it down.
My name's John Rochas, Shore Avenue. Back when we had the floods back in 2010, I believe it was, I was actually a recipient of CPA funding from the town of Middleborough. Our flood insurance actually fell short of completely rebuilding the house, and Middleborough came in and provided the money for heating. It's money that we have to pay back, but in that light, what that allowed me to do is stay in this town of Lakeville and operate a business where you collect the revenue off of 12 vehicles, trailers. I employ seven full-time people. Without that money, I probably wouldn't be operating my business in this town anymore. So outside of the general idea of it's a tax, if you look at the gross revenues that that money from Middleborough has provided to the town of Lakeville, it's sometimes in the town, and it may be a great community that will absolutely help itself out and work as a family, but that would not have happened. So I encourage you to vote yes.
And over here?
Maria Peroni Martin, lifelong resident of Lakeville, and I would like to see Lakeville stay the way it is. But just a couple of points. One is, was made already, that it's just we're going to vote on allowing other Lakeville residents to make their decision. So I don't think we should just assume that they're not going to like this. Secondly, we're taxed by the state. The state takes our money. Lakeville takes our money. If we're going to invest in our town and put in like so much, that's a small percentage, and the state is going to give us money, it's kind of like, to me...
But that would not have happened. So I encourage you to vote yes.
And over here?
Maria Peroni Martin, lifelong resident of Lakeville, and I would like to see Lakeville stay the way it is. But just a couple of points. One is, was made already, that it's just we're going to vote on allowing other Lakeville residents to make their decision. So I don't think we should just assume that they're not going to like this. Secondly, we're taxed by the state. The state takes our money. Lakeville takes our money. If we're going to invest in our town and put in like so much, that's a small percentage, and the state is going to give us money, it's kind of like, to me, like a stock option. You know, you put that money in and you get more back. And then I have a question for the Finance Committee, because they did recommend it. I'd like to know why they recommended it. I think they could give us some good financial reasons.
Finance Committee, do you have reasons why you voted for this article?
George Flohopolis, Jamie's Way. So there was a lot of debate about this, and a lot of us started off in the same positions that you were in terms of, this is another tax, and no one wants to be taxed again. At the same time, looking at the numbers that other towns have generated in terms of revenue and the like, there has been, there's proof that this works. We had a lot of the same reservations in terms of, you know, who's going to manage this money? How's it going to be controlled? Who's going to make these decisions? And again, it came back to the town, so it's no different than anything that's been put before us today in terms of us voting for it. So a lot of us started off in the same position as you. We looked at the numbers, the numbers made sense from what other towns have done, but I think more so, there's opportunity to do more, and I think that we all agree that there's, you know, and I get it, you know, a lot of us realize this town is made up of land, and we have plenty of it. But that being said, there's other good that the monies can be used for, and I think in looking at some of the opportunities and some of the, somebody had alluded to the fact that the money's already been spent. I think part of the way that it was presented to us was, there's certain things that can be done to improve the town, to improve the current structure that we have, including things such as Ted Williams Camp, and these funds can be used for that. And I think when it ultimately came down to it, as I believe it was unanimous, we agreed that these, that this would be beneficial to the town as a whole.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I guess...
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, one last comment. Just a clarification, the last gentleman, what he received was an actual loan from HUD, the Executive Office of Housing, through Middleborough, but it had nothing to do with Lakeville. It wasn't money that came from Lakeville, and it definitely wasn't money that came from Middleborough CPA. There are very few things you could do with this. And again, it is a tax, and it's just something we don't need. We, every time we want something, we end up getting it. Everybody steps up to the plate and helps us buy it.
All right, thank you. Was there, yes. Slakman Holmberg.
So my concern with this is always that there's an administrative cost to these things that nobody necessarily wants to speak about. We don't have a housing authority currently in the town of Lakeville. That would be something that would need to be vetted, just as a cautionary tale. The cost of establishing potentially a housing authority or figuring out exactly how to use the mandated 10% that we must use for affordable housing or the housing community would be something that likely could result in additional costs that would eat out of the operating budget of the town. So please consider that. Secondly, there are a number of enticements that the state has given us to do things that don't always come to fruition in terms of funding. A couple examples that we've seen, and we've certainly been a party to, relate to the Chapter 71 funding, which comes through for the regional transportation reimbursement from the state, where the state, at one point in time, was to reimburse 100% of the regional transportation, which was to incite towns to regionalize their school districts so that the transportation costs would be offset by money that comes from the state. We have seen that number fluctuate. I don't even know exactly what percentage we're getting any longer. It might be somewhere around 60% of the regional transportation. But certainly, it's never been 100% as was promised originally. That was the promise, it never made it. Secondly, 40S funding. 40S funding, which is our Smart Growth funding, which also is related to the schools, it relates to affordable housing that has been created within the town of Lakeville. For the number of school students that are invested in housing that happens to be near a transportation hub, those students were supposed to receive a reimbursement from the state to incentivize us, again, to have community housing next to a transportation center. Every single time that the legislation, or the legislature meets, they need to fight for this line item in the budget. The state has incentivized, there are only, I believe, two or three towns, it might just still be two, Lakeville is one of them, that has a 40S development, and that line item in the budget at the state level is continuously cut. Unfortunately, our legislatures, our legislators have been working very diligently every single budget season to fight for that number, for that number to come back to the town of Lakeville. So when we have now 19% is the current reimbursement, or the matching funds, I should say, from the state, please, just a cautionary tale, there's a couple of things on there where there's administrative costs that could eat into the operating budget of the town of Lakeville, and any money that's promised by the state is never guaranteed. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to go to this side.
Patrick Marshall, Bridge Street. I just want to say that I very much support this article. I have, I'm fortunate to work in another municipality that does have this, and the things that that community has been able to do with this funding, whether it be historic preservation, parks, you know, town buildings that, you know, need some work that are in the historic nature, these are things that the town would not be able to do without the CPA funding, and because the town did have it, they were able to do this. It's really a no-brainer. It's funding that really helps the town, it invests in our town. And I just wanted to stress, getting to the point where it's another board or somebody controlling, it's us that get to tell where the money goes. The CPA committee that is formed is made up of town residents. In other towns that I am familiar with, generally speaking, if it's a historic project, it would go to the historic committees as well for their approval, so it's, and ultimately, Town Meeting gets to approve whether or not projects get to be done. So it is still this body, but it does provide us with another resource, another asset that we can use to help improve our town and maintain the culture and just the lifestyle that we've come to enjoy in Lakeville.
Okay, thank you. And over here?
Mr. Moderator, Christopher Plunker again from Baker Lane. I've heard some arguments from the proponents, again, about minimal tax, small tax, benefiting the town. I am, obviously, you know, support those activities. I would much rather have our elected officials making those decisions, and our Finance Committee making those decisions. And again, I just want to remind everybody, the community, my research, from what I've found, the Community Preservation Committee is not answerable to any other elected or appointed officials. The priorities are set by this committee without any regard to the long-term financial goals and plans developed by our elected officials. And again, in regards to the state aid, we know the state aid, outside of this, over the years, has continually decreased from year to year. And again, the numbers show. 2002, 2008 is 100%. As of the last few years, the numbers that I have, the state is only matching 25%, and we know those numbers most likely are only going to go down. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one else? Mr. Moderator? Oh, yes.
I'd like to bring up a few points. John Poutley-Sleckman. I certainly just want to reiterate, I believe it's a tax upon a tax. You already pay enough for your taxes. So what does the town do with the tax money regarding historical buildings? We took approximately $100,000 and redid the town historic offices. We did those windows, I believe about two years ago, that was $100,000. Not in this particular budget, but we're going out for quote, and we have the money in this year's budget. I'll tell you how much money we do put in for upkeep of the existing buildings that we have. We'll currently go out for quote, on the Old Town Hall roof that is in need of repair, and that will be paid out of the current operating budget of what you have paid taxes on. The old, the old library, in the last few years, whether it be through volunteerism or whether it be whether the town paid it, got a new roof, new septic system, and certainly there was a lot of volunteers and donations by construction people. Currently, last year, we put $70,000 in the budget to what I call maintain town buildings. That's the, all the town buildings, whether it's historical, the old library, whether it's the town office building, whether it's the historical building down the street. We have $70,000 that we put in the fund last year. This year, we also are putting in the same $70,000 worth of fund, so that we don't need more taxes to pay for projects. I believe the projects are being done. Whether they're done to everyone's satisfaction, we are putting in $70,000 a year. It doesn't always mean for these projects, but we've looked at all of these projects that are on the project ideas for Lakeville, some of which will be funded. So I believe you pay enough taxes. I believe the town's putting aside $70,000 per year already, and that should be enough to maintain our historical buildings in town. I believe increased taxes only encourage you to find ways to spend the money and not always prudently. So I'd say, don't increase your taxes. As far as getting grants, you can always file for grants. As far as CPA money, you may have to put up seed money in order to get grants. We do that now with the green energy community grants. We've got over $250,000 worth of grants in the last several years. We're hoping to get another $250,000 grant. In some cases, we have to put up money towards those to make the payback more appropriate so that they do get approved. So I believe the town puts aside money already out of your So I believe the town puts aside money already out of your taxes, you do not need more taxes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No clapping.
And, and if you have something new to offer? Okay, go ahead. And then I think we'll go to.
Thank you, I just want to address a couple of points. When I first moved to Lakeville, the CPA failed. We were surprised to see that there were no exemptions written into the article. We worked very hard to make sure that every single possible exemption was present in this article, that it was friendly to everybody. I have a printout of every piece of real estate property in Lakeville, I have gone over every single number. I don't think there's anything excessive here to ask of anybody. With regards to projects and things being addressed and taken care of, there is a list of things that we need that hasn't been addressed in the number of 13 years that I've been here. We have visitors coming from outside of town that don't have any, we don't have signage in our parks, we don't have bathrooms, there are lots of things that need to be done. The property over at the corner of Hill and Pickens is town-owned property, I've been trying to raise only $8,000 for two years. I could make you laugh telling you stories of how I've tried to raise money for these things. I would love it if there was money for this, this is the first that I've heard of it, this is what's driven me to the CPA. As for housing, we don't need a housing department, all we need is an account to drop into housing. There doesn't have to be a board of housing to approve these projects, they just need to meet the CPA qualifications. There is a governing board for the CPA projects, there, there is a committee of townspeople that will work with residents to help them develop their projects, but the projects come, come from the residents as well. And I just want to close on the idea that there is nothing more American than a group of townspeople coming together with an idea that they want to get off the ground and, and raising funds to make that happen, and this is one way to do that, and not just you, it's money from your own pockets, but to attract outside funds. If we don't like the way it's working, we can always vote it out. It's not like we're gonna be tied to this forever if it doesn't work, but so far, it's worked for 160 other towns in Massachusetts. Look at how great they look. There are things more scary than, than this little surcharge that we're talking about. Look around, we need to do something, we need to pull it together. And I thought this was a great way for us to do it. I hope you agree.
All right, thank you. And it looks like we have someone else? Yeah, something new to add?
Yeah. Visiter, Annie. You know, I've been here, and this is the first town meeting I've been to, and I've been in Lakeville a little while. Yeah, yeah, it's only $28, $30, okay? When I first bought my house down here, I was paying like $15, $16,000 for taxes a year. I'm up to over $5,000. I'm retired, okay? So $28 here, $28 there. I get people that call me for money every day, soliciting. Oh, you're gonna, $10? The boys go, the police department, the fire department, where does it stop? I mean, how much money do we have? I mean, if I gave everything away, I wouldn't be able to live. All these charities. So it's gotta stop someplace, thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one else at a microphone, this is a majority vote. So I will ask you if you are in favor of passing the Community Preservation Act, since we've had a little time, I'll remind you what we're voting on. As Article 7, if you are in favor of the article, please raise your cards and hold them.
Oh, no.
Wake up.
All right, thank you. Please put them down.
Take that one off.
All right, if you can put your cards down. If you are opposed to Article 7, please raise your cards. I declare Article 7 fails by a majority. Thank you. Article 8, in just a moment. We, we have plenty of more business to do. Article 8 has to do with the Right to Farm Bylaw. Can we not read that, Mr. Moderator? Can we not, what? What I will do, Article 8, I've been reading the articles, 'cause not everyone had a copy, maybe if you're leaving, you can leave a copy behind, but... We, we lost some lights, I think. What I would ask, I would ask you as, as members of this town meeting, I know you may not have it written, but by vote of acclamation, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of Article 8, as it is several pages long and has been posted. So moved, is there a second? Move in a second. All those in favor of waiving the reading of Article 8, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
Hmm. I'm, I'm gonna need some light, if we can check on that.
You want these lights?
Can, is, is someone working on the light while I? I'm gonna declare that that was a majority vote to waive the reading. So with waiving the reading, I would entertain a motion on Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Hunt, 8 Racecourse Road, and a member of the Agricultural Steering Committee. Regarding Article 8, the Right to Farm Bylaw, I make a motion to table this article indefinitely.
Okay, we've had a motion to table. As this is a main motion, oh, great, thank you, whoever got the light. As this is a main motion, it only needs a majority to pass to table this article indefinitely. All those in favor of tabling Article 8 indefinitely, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All who oppose to tabling indefinitely Article 8, please raise your cards. The motion to table indefinitely passes by a majority. I would now entertain a motion to waive the reading of the rest of the warrant, which I probably should have done in the first place, but... Motion to waive the reading of the remaining warrant has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm out.
Could we get her a copy? Does someone have an extra copy, please? Seriously. Does anyone up here at the table have a copy?
She got one.
She got one, okay, good. So, motion to waive the reading of the remaining warrant has been waived, I would entertain a motion for Article 9.
Mr. Moderator, still Paul Hunt, still 8 Racecourse Road, still a member of the Steering Committee. Regarding Article 9, the establishment of an agricultural commission, Mr. Moderator, I make a motion, we table this article indefinitely.
Motion's been made and seconded, again, a majority vote. All those in favor of tabling indefinitely Article 9, raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to tabling Article 9 indefinitely, please raise your cards. I believe that's a majority in favor of wa, of table indefinitely Article 9. Article 10, as we waive the reading, I would accept the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new section entitled Agricultural Commission in Article 3 as Section 28 as set forth in the warrant.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, could, would you mind speaking to the article?
Sure, Mr. Moderator. As you just heard, Article 8 and Article 9 were tabled indefinitely. This was done in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and the Agricultural Commission Steering Committee, where we met with them to establish the Agricultural Commission through, vetting it through town council, along with the Board of Selectmen. We are in favor of this. I will let Aaron speak to it a little bit further at this point.
Hi, I'm Aaron Burke, I'm the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville. Obviously, it's Lakeville. One of the things that's important to point out about this article is that this came as a petition, but through, working cooperatively with, with the folks on the Steering Committee, we really tailored this, this warrant article for the needs of the town. So I encourage people that have a petition idea to try to come to the town or come to the Board of Selectmen in advance and work with us. It's a much better way to make laws for your town. When you do them by petition, you have to kind of stick 'em in and hope that you have the resources to enforce them, and hope that you have the, the people to implement them. Whereas with this, we did it as a team, and we really have a good outcome. So it's just kind of a, a point I wanted to make relative to the petition articles. I'm not, I think the petition articles are great in the sense that it's, it's people speaking their mind and getting involved in, in democracy, but I think in a practical sense, if you have a good idea, really, we can really make it a great idea because we can, we can get it to fit into the, the workings of government from the get-go. So that's what we did with this.
All right, thank you. And did a copy, make it down? I'll just ask. And Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee did vote to recommend approval of this article.
All right, thank you. And we'll turn it over to the floor.
Mr. Moderator, just to hit on Selectman Burke's point regarding this, we did have informational meetings, we did have public meetings on this, and a lot of active discussion between the Steering Committee, different members of the board, and also the farming community in the town of Lakeville. The determination was made to go forward with the Agricultural Commission and remove the Right to Farm Bylaw at this particular time, the Right to Farm Bylaw proposal. The establishment of the commission is gonna work on the proper wording for the Right to Farm Bylaw for the town of Lakeville. We're doing all this in an effort to tailor it for our particular town's needs. There are several other agricultural communities in the area, you can read their Right to Farms and so forth online. Lakeville's a little bit different than, say, the cow farm communities to the south of us, or the cranberry farm communities to the east of us. We think that we've come to good terms with the board, the Steering Committee completely supports the article that is being presented now, and we ask for the support of the people in town. The commission itself is not one that's gonna have any real teeth. We are gonna be a commission that makes suggestions, that attempts to continue agricultural to flourish in the town, and to keep the communities of all in the agricultural arena. But, you know, we're not gonna be another board with more regulations, we're not gonna come onto your property and, and try and, try and impose laws, we're gonna try and mediate situations and do the best we can to keep the town moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dennis Santos, seat upon. I'm just kind of curious with regard to this, this commission, in terms of the idea that it's not gonna have a lot of jurisdiction, it's not gonna have a lot of teeth, but when I look at the composition, that's where it really concerns me, 'cause you're talking about a situation that it's gonna be six to one in terms of six farming community representatives and one resident at large. If you ask me, that tends to weight towards the idea of encouraging and expanding farming within the town. And when I think about that prospect, you know, a simple move by a butter in the town to decide to engage in a farming activity that is large enough in scope, or high-impact type activity, could really cause detrimental situations to the values of anyone in this town. So, you know, when I see this, and I see a six to one ratio in terms of what the composition is gonna be, it really concerns me, 'cause that's really gonna weight towards advancing the farming activities, and really, perhaps, you know, create an unfair playing field for those residents in town that, although farming is, is fine, but it, there's a point at which it becomes an issue where the rights of the butters are being outweighed by the right to farm. And when I hear this Right to Farm Bylaw talk as well, I'm really concerned about that. And it comes from personal experience, because over the years, of 10 years of being in town, we've, my wife and I, my family, have had to come to the town on numerous occasions to deal with issues with regard to farming and the butters. And we have bylaws that are on the books today that, that work, and are, we're able to really take care of issues and come to some resolutions that I think were reasonable. So, but when I hear this commission, the six to one ratio, I'm really concerned about that, and at this point, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, may I address?
Um, sure.
So I just want to give a little bit of the history between when we received the petition article, and we started talking with the Agricultural Commission Steering Committee, to kind of address your concern related to the six to one type ratio. Originally, the petition article that was brought forth actually had the appointment authority essentially being the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the Agricultural Steering Commission as a joint appointment, as we do with the majority of the boards in town. The, this article brings it forth that the Board of Selectmen is actually the appointing authority for those individuals, of which six are to be from the farming community, and one is to be a resident at large. So that was an, an area where we felt we needed checks and balances in case there ended up being some individuals that were appointed to the commission or to the, the Agricultural Commission that may have be, may have extreme values one way or another. You always have the right to not elect the Selectmen. As the appointing authority for those individuals, if you don't like the people that we're appointing, you have the right at the ballot box to not vote us in again. So we wanted to make sure that there were those checks and balances, because if the Agricultural Commission were to bring its own members forth and to have the authority to continue to appoint those members or a joint appointment, we would lose some of those checks and balances. It doesn't necessarily address your question on the six to one between the farming community and the individual, but also, in addition to that, you, you address the Right to Farm Bylaw. The first mission, I guess I would say, or the charge of the Agricultural Commission, they will create a charge for the Agricultural Commission. The first item that they're going to be really looking at is the Right to Farm Bylaw in conjunction with the Board of Health, the existing regulations that exist in Lakeville, and, and that's kind of the vetting process for this going forward, if that helps to answer any of those questions.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bob Palucci, Chairman of the Board of Health. We've also been meeting with them, and just to assure people, at this current time, no regs are changing. They were the advisory group. Again, they all sat down, originally they had the bylaw and everything, and after sitting down with all of us, they've accepted that. It needed a lot more work and a lot more input. So, nothing on our regs is gonna change setting up this board. Right now, they're in advisory, and our board also has agreed that this is a good idea for the town, give us more people in the field when we do have a problem with a neighbor, that they can, you know, maybe mediate it a little bit and help that issue out.
All right, thank you.
So we support it.
All right, seeing no one else at a microphone, this is a majority vote required. So I'd ask you, if you are in favor of Article 10, which means you're in favor of adopting the Agricultural Commission, then please raise your cards. All right, thank you, you may put them down. If you're opposed to Article 10, please raise your cards. I declare the motion passes by a majority. Article 11. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate for the use of the trustees of the County Cooperative Extension Service, the sum of $500, and to set the length of the term of the town director at one year, as provided in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 128, Section 41 and 42. So my long-winded explanation of the $500 is it basically goes to the Plymouth County Extension 4H, and it's used our share of the booklets and manuals and fact sheets to help support the 4H effort.
And do I, do I have a second? And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made. A second, and I believe you've spoken to it. As you send the copy down, the Finance Committee have a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approving this article.
Thank you. Seeing no one raising to the microphones with any questions or comments, it's a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 11, please raise your cards. I declare the motion passes unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $944,170 as the share of the town of Lakeville and the Plymouth County Retirement Association.
Thank, motion in second. Would you care to speak to the article?
I will. This is our portion of the required contribution for the town of Lakeville for all of our employees in the Plymouth County Retirement.
All right, thank you. And does the Finance Committee have?
Mr. Mo-
Is there a question?
The numbers are different.
Well, where'd we get our number from? This motion? It's different from our book. Please hold.
Have we got to confirm that number?
You know why this is? It is. The reason for the confusion is that we have two other articles for the landfill and the Park Department Enterprise Funds, which are separately stated in their own budgets, which you voted earlier tonight.
So for the record, what was the motion, the number for the motion?
The motion is still $944,170.
All right, thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend approving this.
Yeah.
And we'll just need a copy of the motion. Seeing no one rising to the microphones, it's a majority vote again. All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposing Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you, I declare motion passes by majority. Article 13.
Okay, this is for, this is for the Old Colony budget. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,672,968 as the town's share of the 2016-2017 Maintenance and Operating Budget for the Old Colony Regional Vocational High School District, consisting of, this is included in the number I gave, of non-excluded debt assessment of $138, excuse me, $130,658, the operating cost assessment of $1,378,795, and the transportation assessment of $163,515, to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the towns of Acushnet, Carver, Matapoyset, and Rochester.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Yes, thank you. The, this is what, we have 122 students, Lakeville students at the school this year. We usually have in the vicinity of 135, somewhere between 135 and 140. And it's a, it's operated as a vocat, a VOTEC school. We're a Tier One school continuously. I mean, again, they, it's a specialized education, but they do a very good job. It's a nice place. And Acushnet, Carver, and Matapoyset have already voted based on this, based on this breakdown, and they voted favorably on it. Rochester hasn't voted yet, will be the fourth one, and the four out of, four out of five makes it a, this confirms their budget. And I hope you will vote in favor of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we need a copy of that. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approving.
Thank you. Seeing no one rising to the microphones for any further discussion, then again, a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 13, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Anyone opposed to Article 13, please raise your cards. Thank you, I declare the article passes by majority. Article 14.
I'm Brett Kulikovich from the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, also Chair of the Regional Finance Subcommittee. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,717,624 as the town's share of the 2016-2017 Maintenance and Operating Budget for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, consisting of the excluded debt assessment of $505,700, the operating cost assessment of $11,791,300, and the transportation assessment of $421,317, to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the town of Free Town.
And do I have a second?
There was an error in the reading.
There was.
Was it the? No, the error in the reading was, he read it as excluded, and it was non-excluded. The error in the reading was, it was read as excluded, and it should have read non-excluded.
Can you show me where that was? It was written as excluded.
We believe it is excluded debt.
Are you here? My copy on the, on the article, on the third line, it says, "consisting of the non-excluded debt assessment."
So your point of order is that in the article, it is written as non-excluded debt?
Correct.
Consisting of the non-excluded debt. Now, as you may know, the motion can vary from the article as numbers are put in. What I believe I'm hearing is there was no number for non-excluded debt. That was removed, and if you read in the article, the next phrase is the excluded, which we have included.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your point of order. Has there been a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. And would you care to speak to the motion?
Sure. This is for the Lakeville share of the schools for this year. We have an enrollment of 1,632. It counts for just about 57% of that enrollment for our district. We also have other members of the committee here and Mr. Rick Madiro, Superintendent. If there's any other questions that are pertinent to the number.
All right, thank you. And we just need a copy of the motion. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. Seeing no one rising to the microphones. This is a majority vote again. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 14, please raise your cards. Thank you, I declare it passes by majority. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law C. 71, Section 16D, or any other authority, to approve the bond authorization voted on April 27, 2016 by the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District School Committee in the amount of $510,000 for the purpose of paying costs of reconstructing the district's swimming pool, including payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Yes. Generally, this is one of the, it's different than last year. I just want to explain that. That is, we're putting it before the townsfolk to approve the borrowing by the school for And Free Town is also voting on the same issue tonight. And I could go through the numbers of what the pool is used for, but there's several hundred children and adults that take swim lessons. There's many groups of 60 children and adults times five different series of lessons. There's lifeguard training, there's three, three swim teams that swim there, the girls' boys', high school swim team, a warrior swim team, the kids' cafe, which is the summer program, which is held at the middle school, uses the pool, it's used by the community for various functions and parties. I'm certainly speaking in support of it, but I want to say that the difference between, if we did not put the motion ourselves, or the town of Free Town, put it before the taxpayers, after 60 days of no activity in our part, it really authorizes them to do the borrowing on their own. Last year, the track and tennis courts were redone at a cost of approximately $350,000. So I wanted to mention that. Lakeville's cost of the tennis courts and track, the gross cost was 350. The pool, if we approve it, is $510,000. So that Lakeville pays a little more than half of that amount on an annual basis for five years. That's, that's the program. And I'm in favor, not just of the pool, but of all sports. I don't want to single out saying, oh my God, why do we do tennis courts? There's only, you know, 50 people that use the tennis courts. But I'm also in favor of the football fields, softball fields, the basketball courts, whatever we need to do in order to keep our sports within the school. I'm also, I'll do the drum roll of certainly supporting the drama clubs, the band. So to make the schools a well-rounded school, we need active kids in sports, we need active kids in the arts and, arts and drama and band and those types of things. So I would encourage us to allow the school to be able to borrow as they have done their vote on, as I said, April 29. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And if you send a copy of your motion, I'll ask for the Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee had recommended approving this article.
Thank you. Seeing no one rising to speak further. This again is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 15, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 15, please raise your cards. I declare the article passes unanimously. Article 16.
Good evening again. Brett Kulikovich, Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee and Regional Finance Subcommittee Chair. So I do want to note here that actually, the motion that I am holding in my hand as opposed to what was published at the time of the warrant, does contain the actual value. So that is going to be the difference in the reading because the totals are actually in that were not available at the time the warrant was made. So to that end, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $183,493 for the payment of vocational educational tuitions and related transportation for students enrolled in vocational educational programs other than an Old Colony Vocational School.
Thank you. Motion in second. So would you care to speak to this article? Just a quick explanation?
Oh, so yes, there's a, there are students that go out of district for other vocational school systems that are outside of Old Colony Vocational, and those are the students that we have to fund.
All right, thank you. Oh, we need a copy of the motion. I'm hearing it's mostly for Bristol Aggie. The Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted to recommend this.
Thank you. Seating or talking? Seating. Seeing no one raising to the microphone, this is again a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 16, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 16, please raise your cards. I declare vote passes unanimously. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Aaron Burke, and I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to cover the cost of contractual obligations upon retirement of town employees.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Yes. So this is a fund that we've set up to cover accrued vacation time and eligible sick leave buyback upon retirement of town employees.
Thank you. And if you can send a copy of the motion, I'll ask the FinCom for their recommendations.
The Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. Again, I see no one wishing to speak, so a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 17, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 17, please raise your cards. Again, I declare it passes unanimously. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $130,000 for the purpose of adding to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund under Gatsby 45 pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second. Would you care to speak to the article?
I would, and I will be brief, which everyone can laugh at when they hear how passionate I am about OPEB. So this is a funding for other post-employment benefits, which really is health insurance. As our employees hit 10 years, full-time employees, those who work 20 hours or more actually, they're entitled to health insurance for life. This is an unfunded liability that all cities and towns and school districts are facing in the state of Massachusetts and really across the country. So this is a liability that has not been funded fully by any means. Our current actuarial liability is approximately $17 million for the projected cost of health insurance for retirees. Right now, in our annual operating budget, we're paying about $900,000 for current employees' health insurance and about $700,000 for retirees' health insurance. That is a cost that's going to continue to rise. This is an effort to start dealing with the sustainability problem that we will have going forward as a town, as will every town and school district in the state of Massachusetts and city. In addition to this, we are looking to join a trust fund, which would actually be able to lower our actuarial liability based upon a calculated formula to about $10 million. So we are looking into other funding options and mechanisms to deal with this issue now. We have funded this OPEB trust fund in the past. Our total that we have put into this article since the beginning of 2010, really fiscal year 11 is when we started funding the OPEB trust. Right now, we have about $335,000 in that fund. We have a long way to go. This is something that will not go away anytime soon.
Thank you. And I'll ask the Finance Committee for their recommendation.
Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. Seeing no one else with questions, majority vote. All those in favor of Article 18, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposing Article 18, please raise your cards. Declare passes unanimously. Article 19.
John Oliveri, Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 for the purpose of funding the triannual recertification of the town's real estate and personal property in fiscal year 2018, as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and any costs incidental or related thereto.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And would you care to speak to the article?
Very briefly. We're required to do this by the state of Massachusetts, so we need to raise and appropriate the money in order to do so.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Because we're required to do so? The Finance Committee does recommend approval of article.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, all those in favor of Article 19, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 19? your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article nineteen, please raise your card. Seeing none, declare passes unanimously. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the settlement recovery account the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of making repairs to Assawampset Elementary School as may be determined by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion and second, would you care to speak to it?
Yes. If you remember back in, a few years ago, we had a friendly lawsuit with the regional school district, and we settled that in a friendly lawsuit, and they had committed to reimburse us for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of all the payments the town had made. To date, they've given us two hundred thousand dollars of that funds back. We basically had committed to reinvest that into a school facility, and Assawampset is owned by the town of Lakeville. So that we had, so we'd like that transfer to happen. Basically, the hundred thousand dollars would be reinvested. We had met with a Assawampset Facility Study Committee of approximately twenty people, and our building commissioner Nate Dowling and the school facility manager Bob Souzer have prioritized what projects that they deem to be the most important to accomplish. So that in next year, we'd like to accomplish a hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs and capital. We also would like to supplement that through an energy grant, a green community grant that we have already done a, a, a study and identified where we'd like to spend that money. So our goal is to reinvest the grant money and reinvest a hundred thousand dollars into Assawampset in the next year, and we'd like to continue doing similar things in the next few years, a second round of grant financing, and whatever money, although we're not obligated to, we'd like to earmark whatever money we get through that friendly lawsuit back into the Assawampset school. So that's basically what this is about.
All right, thank you. And while you send a copy down, will the finance committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. So we'll ask for a majority vote. All those in favor of Article twenty, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. Any opposed to Article twenty, please raise your cards. I declare passes unanimously. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of meeting the new MS four stormwater permit requirements, including but not limited to engineering, construction, training, and inspection costs.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Anyone care to speak to it?
I would. So the Massachusetts small MS four general permit will become effective July first, two thousand and seventeen. There are some requirements, this is coming down from the EPA, that the town will need to incur certain costs to comply with this mandate. We are setting aside fifty thousand dollars for this year. The potential is that in future years, it could be more expensive than this. This is kind of a half-year implementation for anything we need to do to get ready for the MS four permit coming forward.
All right, thank you. And does finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. Seeing no further question, again, majority vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-one, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. Any opposing Article twenty-one, please raise your cards. That's a microphone. I declare it passes unanimously. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, Aaron Burke, I move that the town vote to appropriate four hundred thousand dollars to pay preliminary design costs for a new police station, including but not limited to the site work, hiring of architects, engineers, project manager, and other professionals for the preparation of design work, designs, working drawings, bid documents, and related materials, and for all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section seven, subsection twenty-one of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. And would you care to speak to it?
Yes, I am working through the authority of the Board of Selectmen. I was chosen to work with the Police Station Design Review Committee, of which we've assembled a wonderful group of construction professionals. At this point in time, if, if as a town, we're going to be serious about a new police station, we need to vote this tonight to appropriate this money, which we will be used to bring forward a design that we can then vote on as a town once it's completed. So this is really the first step. If you're for a new police station, you vote yes. If you're not, you should really think about why. Maybe you should visit the police station and use the bathroom. But it, this, this Design Review Committee, again, it's a wonderful group of, of construction professionals, and it's really a great process we're going through. So we need this money to continue that process.
Thank you. Does finance committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee does recommend approving this article.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Derek Maxey, one seat at Berry Lane. This is a long time coming, and they deserve better. We need to do something for the police station. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Rodney Dixon, Baker Lane. Just a quick question. Where the four hundred thousand dollar fee come from? The expected costs, is it based on averages, actual costs? Did you guys do an RFI or an RFP?
I can answer that. So originally, when we started out, we were, we're examining the idea of a modular building, which has a different procurement law than a regular stick-built building. Well, we've determined that because of the scope of this project, regardless of whether we go one direction or another, we need to have a project manager and a designer design the, the building. So this is ideally going to get us through, hopefully, the preliminary design to a point where we, as a town, can, can decide if we want to move forward. And it's based on assuming roughly ten percent of the project cost.
Okay, is that, and that's industry standard, ten percent?
More or less. I mean, this won't necessarily get us through to the complete project, but this will get us enough to a point where we can bring it forward with, with a concrete plan that, that the people can decide on whether they want to pay for it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Selectman.
Thanks.
All right. Seeing no one else rising, are we any questions?
Yes. Just a couple things, too. If you watched our budget hearing that we proposed originally, it was based upon the modular building and the pricing that we had seen with the modular building. At the time, we had believed that we were able to cover the cost of the police station through the operating budget. At the time, we were looking at around two-point-five million dollars. We've had discussions as the Board of Selectmen of the number potentially, if this goes stick-built, up to six million dollars. So we did want to caution you, or at least make you aware, I should say, that the vote for the four hundred thousand dollars is the first step in moving towards a vote potentially for six million dollars. So not to kind of put anything, we want to put all the information out there as well. That would be something that we would come to the town, obviously, we come to, to the voters of Lakeville, to determine how that borrowing would be funded as well. In addition to that, we did approve the article at the annual town meeting last year for three hundred thousand dollars for roof repairs for the police station. The hope is that we will not need to expend those funds for the roof, because we may be able to move this forward. The timeline is still kind of uncertain at this point.
Anyone else with any comments? Seeing none, this does require a two-thirds vote. Again, just as a test, please feel free to say vote no. Don't feel at all obligated not to, but if I have all yeses, then we won't need to do a counted vote. But please, and I'm serious, feel free to vote no. It's by no means to put you under pressure. So I, seriously. I am serious. So, and we'll do it, and if, and if there are any no votes, we'll go straight to a count. So all those in favor of Article two, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed to Article twenty-two? I see some no's, so we will go to a counted vote. If I could have the tellers, and this is just so we can have the record of numbers for, for the record and the Attorney General. So if you are, we're going to do it again, only this time, hold your card up, and we'll count them. Tellers, please. If you're in favor of Article twenty-two, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put your cards down. Any opposed to Article twenty-two, please raise your cards and hold it to be counted? All right, thank you. I declare the motion is passed by a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, Aaron Burke, I move that the town vote to transfer from the, from the Board of Selectmen for the purposes, which it is currently held to the Board of Selectmen for its current purposes and/or the purposes of locating a police station and/or other municipal building thereon, the care, custody, management, and control of a portion of land known as the Ted Williams Camp, as it is located at twenty-eight Precinct Street in the town of Lakeville, and identified as Assessor's Map zero-two-seven, Block zero-zero-two, and Lot zero-two-eight. Said portion of, as shown on a preliminary plan on file in the office of the town clerk. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit a petition for special legislation to the General Court under the provisions of Article ninety-seven of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, if applicable, authorizing the foregoing transfer.
Thank you. Second? Motion and second, would you care to speak to it?
Yes, so with your materials, you should see a map. The map with the red rectangle, the red rectangle is the proposed location of the new police station. So this is in between the Lakeville Tennis Club and the opening to the Ted Williams Camp on Route eighteen side, on the Bedford Street side. So that block there is approximately three acres, and that is where we'd like to put the police station. The, the regarding Article ninety-seven, Lynn, we actually heard from Representative Oral today that we may not need to do that, but we do want to go forward with this, with this motion, or I should say with this article, because in the event that we do need it, we want to make sure that we have all our bases covered for that. But it would be actually good news if we didn't need it, because that could, could help us in, in terms of the timeline, so.
All right, thank you. So the finance committee have a recommendation?
Yes, the finance committee does recommend approving.
Thank you. It appears no one, unless the table has any further discussion, no one has risen. This is, again, a two-thirds vote required, so I'm just going to ask the tellers to please do a counted vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-three, please raise your cards and hold them to be counted. Thank you. Thank you. Seven, seven-three. Thank you, may put your cards down. All those opposed to Article twenty-three, please raise your cards to be counted.
One.
Thank you.
Zero. Six.
Thank you. I declare the motion passes by a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, Aaron Burke, I move that, that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of a parcel of land with improvements located at two-thirty-nine Main Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts, which land is identified on Assessor's Map zero-zero-seven, Block zero-zero-two, Lot zero-zero-six, and described in a deed filed with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book eighty-nine-twenty-five, page two-thirty-two, from the Board of Selectmen for library purposes, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, and for the purpose of conveyance, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said property on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interests of the town, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and to execute all instruments as may be necessary or convenient on behalf of the town to effect said conveyance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion and being seconded. And would you like to speak?
Sorry, I was reading, I thought I was reading the wrong one. Trying to sell the old town hall by accident. This is to sell the Assessor's Building. One of the things that, that, as the Board of Selectmen has kind of developed here, is we, we're really working on the improvement of the delivery of services to the community, and we really believe that it's important to have the assessors at the town hall. So when you go in to deal with your abatements for your cars, or any other matter that you have from a tax perspective, you got the assessors and the tax collectors under one roof, open at the same hours. Yay! So, yes. So that's what we're trying to do with this. We talked about it at a meeting, and we said, let's just put it on the town meeting warrant and see if people are in agreement with this. And if you are, then obviously you vote yes, and if you're not, then it's continuing as business as usual. But this is really an opportunity for us to, again, try to improve the delivery of services to all of you so that it's more convenient.
All right, thank you. And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee is in agreement with this and does recommend approving it.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak? Hearing none, again, it's a two-thirds vote. I'll ask the tellers to please count. We've got a bunch of two-thirds coming up, folks, so. All those in favor of Article twenty-four, please raise your cards and keep them raised to be counted. Thank you.
Sixty-five.
Thank you. May put your cards down. Any opposed to Article twenty-four, please raise your cards and let it be counted?
Zero.
Thank you. Thank you. I declare the motion passes by the two-thirds. Article twenty-five.
I move the town vote to transfer from the Debt Service Capital Project Stabilization Fund the sum of seventy-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars for the purpose of funding the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen principal and interest payments due on the three-year lease for equipment and technology for the town network as authorized by the June ninth, two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have a second? And would you care to speak to it?
Uh, just that it is the final of three payments on the, uh, Equipment and Technology Network authorized back in 2014.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee recommends?
Finance Committee does recommend.
Thank you. Anyone else have any discussion? Seeing none, it is a two-thirds vote, again, I'll ask the tellers to count. All those in favor of Article 25, please raise your cards to be counted.
Twenty-three.
Thank you.
Forty-eight.
Thank you.
Sixty-three.
Thank you. Put, you may put your cards down now. Any opposed to Article 25, please raise your cards.
Zero.
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 Zero, zero, zero. I declare it passes by the two-thirds. Article 26.
Alright, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to pay costs of capital improvements and, and equipment and all costs incidental and relative thereto as follows. Police Department, three new police cruisers with equipment, less trade-in, so a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Fire Department, a one new pumper for the Fire Department with equipment, less trade-in, five hundred, fifty thousand dollars. One new command vehicle for, for the Fire Chief with equipment and less trade-in, thirty-two thousand dollars. Highway Department, highway garage roof replacement, twenty thousand dollars. One new one-ton dump truck with plow and equipment, sixty thousand dollars. One new backhoe with equipment, one hundred thousand dollars. One new office trailer with ramp, seventy thousand dollars. Transfer Station, Transfer Station Garage Repairs, twenty thousand dollars. Miscellaneous, Soft Right Financial or similar software for accountant, treasurer, assessing, and town clerk, one hundred, forty thousand dollars. Uh, People GIS Mapping, Complete Streets and Stormwater Software or similar software for the Highway Department, thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollars. One new copy of the Town Offices and Fire Station, ten thousand dollars, for a total of one million, one hundred, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And that to meet this appropriation, the ID Treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay costs for the new pumper for the Fire Department with equipment, less trade-in, and a new backhoe for the Highway Department with equipment, including a payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 9, of the General Laws or any other enabling authority or to, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, and to, uh, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred, thirty-three dollars and ninety cents shall be transferred from free cash and three to transfer the following funds from previous town meetings. Article 10, Annual Town Meeting Held May 8th, 2006, thirteen thousand, six hundred, nine dollars, twenty cents. Article 10, Annual Town Meeting Held June 11th, 2007, six thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Article 10, Annual Town Meeting Held on May 12th, 2008, two thousand, nine hundred, twenty-five dollars and twenty cents. Article Number 10, Annual Town Meeting Held on June 15th, 2009, four hundred, fifty-eight dollars, seventy-three cents. Article 15, Annual Town Meeting Held on June 7th, 2010, twenty-eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars, twelve cents. Article 13, Annual Town Meeting Held on June 13th, 2011, eighteen thousand, seven hundred, seventy-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Article 13, Annual Town Meeting Held on June 4th, 2012, one thousand, eight hundred, twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents for a grand total of seventy-two thousand, three hundred, sixty-six dollars and ten cents, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen and other appropriate, appropriate town officials to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion is being seconded, and would you care to give us an explanation, speak to it?
Haven't I spoken enough? On that?
Do the wrap-up, how about that?
Nope, uh, through the process, uh, the Capital Expendence Committee, um, met with the various departments and came up with this, a list of items that we thought we could acquire in this current fiscal year and, and also, uh, some of the method that we could afford to pay for them. And, uh, it's really the things that we need, some of it has been put off for a number of years.
Alright, thank you. And the Finance Committee recommends?
Yes, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further from the table or from the floor? Alright, seeing none. Again, this is a two-thirds vote, I'd ask the tellers to count. So all those in favor of Article 26, please raise your cards and leave them to be counted. Siri?
Twenty-two.
Forty-five.
Fifty-seven.
Thank you, you may put your cards down. Any opposed to Article 26, please raise your card.
One.
Thank you.
One.
Zero.
Thank you. I declare the article passes by the two-thirds necessary. Article 27.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 34, and apportionment in the amount of three hundred, seventy, three hundred thousand, seventy, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars, or any other amount.
Thank you. I have motion in second, and would you care to speak to it?
Yes. Basically, this is the money that the state, uh, reimburses us, uh, or, I guess, gives us. They've already taken your mo, tax money as normal, and, uh, they give it back for road repairs, uh, and reconstruction of those said roads. Uh, this is, if you read Charlie Baker's, uh, The Governor's Newspaper Articles, this is part of the, this is our apportionment of the two-hundred-million-dollar statewide money they give to the towns to repair their roads. And, uh, so this is simply acknowledging that we get the money and accept it for that. But just one further note is that the state basically reimburses us three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year, which unfortunately is only one-half of the amount needed to keep our roads in good order, and we're not the exception. They, they do that for all the towns in the state, so, uh, somewhat, somewhere down the pike, we have to address the, uh, the funding of more road repairs. But the simplistic thing is, this is just state money coming to the town. Thank you.
Thanks. And the Finance Committee?
Uh, the Finance Committee recommends approving this article.
Thank you, I don't see anyone with any discussion, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 27, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposing, Article 27, please raise your card. Declare passes unanimously. Article 28.
I move the town vote to re, to transfer from free cash a sum of two hundred, thirty-three thousand, one hundred, eighty-five dollars for the purpose of adding to the stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any care to speak to it?
It's a sound fiscal responsibility, I guess, to maintain the stabilization funds in case we do need them, and will certainly help our financial status and bond rating.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else with any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I just want to clarify that in the past, we've been putting approximately fifty thousand dollars into this fund each year. Um, this year, we have a replacement of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars that was previously used from free cash, it actually was used twice in our previous budget, uh, which is why the amount is coming out of free cash again and going back into stabilization, um, for an additional one hundred and eighty-three thousand, one eighty-five.
Alright, thank you. Seeing no one else with questions, this is a two-thirds vote, I'll ask the tellers to count. All those in favor of Article 28, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Thirty-six.
Thank you. Thank you. You may put your cards down. Any opposed to Article 28, please raise your card.
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero.
All zeros, thank you. Passes unanimously. Article 29.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to Debt Service slash Capital Project Stabilization Fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And again, would you care to briefly speak to it?
Much like the previous article, it's a sound fiscal policy. This is, uh, just a transfer to a stabilization fund account that is specifically used for debt service and any capital projects.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee did vote to recommend this.
Thank you. Anyone else have any discussion, questions? Seeing none, um, based on the last vote, I will ask you to raise your cards on this one, even though it's a two-thirds. All those in favor of Article 29, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 29? I see none, declared passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 30.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to the Reserve Fund.
Thank you. And would you like to speak to it?
Basically, it's just the Reserve Fund that can be used for any purposes during the year that, uh, arise from any, be it emergency, repairs, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee?
And the Finance Committee has recommended approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, just to clarify also for everybody, we have been historically putting a hundred thousand dollars into this fund. We have increased it to two hundred thousand dollars. The rationale behind it is, if you recall, or were here for the special town meeting, Article 1, that's where we had the snow and ice deficit. We always end up transferring from, um, our Reserve Fund for the snow and ice deficit each year. We wanted to make sure that we were covering that, um, I believe it was, uh, could look back at it. Um, but it was a significant amount, about ninety thousand dollars. I really could look back and see exactly what it was. Um, but regardless, it's to cover, yeah, now I've just said it six times, so... Um, it's really just to cover the snow and ice deficit, the additional hundred thousand dollars this year.
Alright, thank you. Seeing no one else, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 30, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 30, please raise your cards. Okay. I declare your vote is unanimous. Four. Article 31.
Bob Pallucci, the Board of Health. Article 31, I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate, appropriate the sum of one hundred, forty-four thousand, six hundred, seventy-two dollars and six cents for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facilities projects. Repair, replacement, or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the MGL. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, as well as take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, and would you care to give a brief explanation?
Uh, this is an account, uh, that the town borrowed money from, from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust. Um, there's three hundred thousand dollars that revolves. Um, we had a hundred and forty-four thousand, six seventy-two, oh, six, repaid this year, and we're just reallocating the money. Um, we lend it out to anybody in town who can't afford to repair a septic system. It is repaid with five percent interest, I think. Um, so it doesn't cost the town anything, and it just, um, allows people in town with a failed septic to have a resource to repair it.
Great, thank you. And if we could have your copy of the motion, I'll ask the FinCom for their recommendation.
The Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. Anyone else with any discussion? Seeing none, majority vote. All those in favor of Article 31, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 31, please raise your cards. I declare the vote passes by unanimous decision. Article 32. And Mr. Hoag, as you come up, I'm gonna make a recommendation. You hold each of your motions and pass them in at the end. That'll save you walking back and forth each time, 'cause they're pretty much all the same.
I appreciate that. So in my, um...
I stand corrected, we're gonna need you to bring each one over. I apologize, I apologize, I was trying to save a few minutes, but go ahead.
Okay, Article 32.
Mr. Moderator? I'd like to make a motion to combine Articles 32 through 38.
Second.
Okay, motion to combine is made and seconded. Let me check my paperwork on that. The main motion, well, I guess you can make this, yeah. Okay. So first, we need to vote on the motion that would combine Articles, let me get it right, 32 through 38, which all deal with changing language in the zoning bylaws. And rather than take them as each individual change, um, we're asking you to vote on combining it all into one motion, and then we'll, if affirmative, and you vote yes to combining them, we'll then come back, read the motion for all combined, or as written, and then move on that vote. So, and I'll hold on you for a second. And all those in favor of the motion to combine is a majority vote, please raise your card. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to, uh, merging them together? I declare the motion to combine them has passed by majority. I declare the motion to combine them has passed by majority. With that, then I would ask Mr. Hoag to entertain a motion to, I would move Articles 32 through 38 as combined and as written, as printed in the warrant.
I'm so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right. Could you speak to the combined, all these articles?
Yes, one at a time?
No, you can just speak to them all in general.
Okay.
Just, I'd say an explanation of what they are about.
Okay, they're a little, little different. One of them is for a parcel of land that's next to Russo's facility, which is industrial land on Bedford Street. It's a 0.74 acres of land, and the gentleman who owns it would like it to be rezoned as, I believe it's industrial, nope, to business. It's right next to an industrial piece of property, and it's, on the other side of it is the Barry's Farm. And we thought it would be a good, good fit for that spot. It's a very small piece of property. He can use it as a business, and that's what he intends to do.
All right, thank you. And that?
That's number 32.
That's number 32. I think I jumped the gun a little bit, and that is a different article in that it's changing zoning.
Yes, it is.
The other Articles 33 through 38 are changing language. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Currently, we have them combined. So could you go over the other articles that have been combined with this that changed language?
Sure. The Article 33, we changed some language around to make it more definitive by law, which may, we changed to shall, and we put an "and/or" welfare of the inhabitants towards the end of it, and it's pretty much just to make it more legally binding and also put more authority into it. The next one, Article 34, it's about just correcting from perpendicular to a point between one sideline and another sideline on our limitations, any piece of property that is less than 50 feet wide can't, the wood is contained in that lot, under 50 feet wide doesn't count as the, towards the size of the lot. So you need 70,000 square foot lot, and anything that is less than 50 feet between sidelines doesn't count towards a 70,000 square foot. But we had written perpendicular, and that caused some trouble with some of the lawyers. And so we just changed it to be, to be more conducive to the legal aspect of it. Number 35, abandonment, non-use. It's more or less to, well, this, the abandonment, it's to say that if somebody walks away from a piece of property, doesn't use it for its intended purposes for two years or more, well, two years is when it starts, you lose the protected use of the property. And the underlined stuff is what we're putting in, and the crossed out is what we're taking out. And... There's a lot of them. There we go. 36, it's for the limitation on restoration, talking about non-conforming structures that have been unintentionally destroyed by a fire, may be reconstructed, we took out by fire or other act of God, again, for legal purposes. It's pretty simple and self-explanatory. And 37, this is for inserting new language into the bylaw for the non-conforming use structures and lots, subsection 1.6.1.3, and it's just, uses may be changed, extended or altered. We added changed, we added structures or uses, which is non-conforming structures or uses. So that's pretty much it.
There's a 38. I think we missed 38.
Did you? I don't, here we go. Again, inserting new languages, buildings and structures under the certain specific uses, buildings and structures. For these zoning bylaw, special permits, we put buildings and structures instead of just uses.
Okay.
More definitive for lawyers.
All right. And now I guess you could bring a copy of those up here. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, fortunately, we recommended to recommend approval of all the articles here.
All right, thank you. Any, let me just say, just to be clear, where we have combined these articles, one of them is to change the zoning at 142 Bedford Street from residential to business. That was previously Article 32. The others, 33 through 38, that have all been combined together with 32, the others are to change language in the zoning bylaws based upon recommendations to make them more legally binding and understandable and clear. So it's, it's to both change, change the zoning on one parcel of land and to change zoning bylaws. So that's what you're voting on now as a combined article. So it's a two-thirds vote. I would ask the tellers to count the vote unless there's any further discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Aaron Burke, I was involved with the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee that put these changes forward to the Planning Board in an effort to try to streamline our zoning bylaws. Nate Darling, our zoning enforcement officer and also building commissioner, worked in that committee along with other folks to really try to pinpoint some of the things that he deals with on a day-to-day basis that are problems for him. So not speaking to the changing of the zoning for the parcels specifically, but just to the changes in the bylaw, that subcommittee also recommended approval of all of those changes to the zoning bylaw.
So it'll be, you'll both be voting for those and changing a parcel of land. Okay, seeing no one else? If the counters could counter, if you, all those in favor of the combined Articles 32 through 38, please raise your cards. This is a two-thirds vote. What was the number?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Thank you. You may put your cards down. Any opposed to Article 32?
Zero. Zero.
Were there two zeros? I missed? There was a three and two zeros, correct? And for the record, the Planning Board did vote to approve all of these articles as well. I forgot to ask that before, but for the record. So I declare that the combined Articles 32 through 38 have passed by two-thirds.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be adjourned.
Thank you. All is in favor? Thank you seriously for coming. I appreciate it. The town appreciates it. Your efforts are wonderful. Thank you.